Monday, September 12th, for the District of Milton, I will call the meeting officially to order, and we'd like you to join me in a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And as you may have noticed, Shelley is unable to join us tonight, so we will persevere without her. Action on the agenda. Are there any changes you're aware of, Mr. Domon? No changes to the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Motion from Jennifer, second by Dave, to approve our agenda. Any questions on it? I see none. All in favor of approval signify with aye. Aye. And opposed? Thank you. Action on the minutes, which are in board docs as usual.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on August 22nd, 2022, as presented.
I'll second that. Thank you. Motion from Rick, second by Dave, to approve minutes from our previous meeting. Any questions on the minutes? All in favor of approval signify with aye. Aye. And opposed? Thank you. A is vouchers. Likewise, they are included in board docs for your review.
I'll move to approve the general checking account vouchers totaling $589,753.53, and building fund 49 vouchers totaling $16,980, as presented.
I'll second. Thank you. Motion from Dave, second by Mike, to approve our vouchers in the amounts just enumerated. Our questions on those? I see none. All in favor of approval signify with aye. Aye. And opposed? Thank you. That motion clearly passes. Well, the comment is next, and we do not have anyone signed up to address us, so we will move past that. And we anxiously look forward to a student council report from Ms. Johns. Welcome.
All right. Okay. Is it good? All right. Yeah. On microphone. Yep. There you go. All right. Good evening. Justice School starting back up. Student Council is also starting back up as well. And then I'm here as one more year representative. And then also I'm joined by Holly. She cannot be here tonight. She'll be here in the digital. And she's in 11th grade. And so the school has started. There was an activities fair for the incoming freshmen, and student council and all the other, basically all the other clubs at the high school were represented there. So there was lots of new freshmen, trying to get them more involved as they come into the high school. And then we've also had a couple of student council meetings since school started. Right now, the main focus is homecoming. The week started today, and we had Jersey Day. We have planned the theme dress updates. We have a group of students to help with the activities nights. And a couple of the student council members went to the new student group orientation type thing to talk about homecoming and just like the culture at school. Sounds very cool. And then this week, we have all of our Red Hawks sports, and then the game on Friday night, as well as the dance on Saturday. And as school goes on, student council's meeting every other week, so I will keep you updated. Thank you.
Awesome. What did you say today was Jersey Day?
Yes, Jersey Day.
Did you have a jersey on?
I did. I was wearing my badge.
Addict, girl. Love it. Love it. Very good. Thank you for that. Ah, we move on to Superintendent update, Rich.
A couple of different things that I want to highlight, and I'll pull up my notes here. Since the last board meeting, we've had our workshop week with our staff returning to schools. There's been a lack of one since then, it seems like longer than just a couple of weeks ago, but I guess we've had three weeks since our last board meeting. The week was highlighted by our welcome back to staff day when everyone was back, and a message from our guest speaker, Thomas Murray, around the importance of building strong relationships with students. We're excited to have welcomed back all of our Red Hawks to their classrooms. Although 22, 23 school year is just beginning, there's great things ahead for our students and our staff and our community. And the start of the school year has gone very smoothly, with classroom instruction and activities and athletics all already taking place. Been out in all of the schools, both during workshop week and on the first couple of days of school that we've had so far. And we've gotten really good reports from, from both office staff, administrators, and administrative assistants, and from teachers and students as to how smoothly the start of the school year has gone. So it's been very encouraging to see how well things are going so far. We're excited to have everybody back. Mesa shared some of the information about our homecoming week that's coming up, but we're excited about that, starting this week, and dress updates and activities throughout the week. Many of our schools and student organizations are getting floats ready for the parade on Friday, and we welcome and encourage community members, and parents and community members to attend both the parade and the other activities throughout the week. Friday night's football game is against Beaver Dan, and it's going to be followed by a bonfire that is sponsored by the Milton Youth Coalition, and we're excited about that. That will be in the grounds to the west of the high school. And there are a lot of activities planned for that evening, for something for kids to do after the game. And the homecoming dance is coming up on Saturday. So I want to thank all of our students and staff for all of the work that they've done in preparing for an exciting homecoming week, and we're looking forward to having students, parents, alumni, community members in our schools and at our activities this week.
Awesome. Any questions for Rich on the update? Very good. Go Red Hawks. Three starts new business. A is labeled strategic planning, and by way of background, of course, we have five pillars on our strategic plan. Four of them, any data associated with those, we kind of waded through a couple of meetings ago, and I've gotten an update on most of those, and purposely waited till we had more of the financial data to analyze and dissect and whatnot, which is comprising this fifth door surrounding kind of operations and facilities and those kind of pieces, which they have, they being the admin folks, have done a little bit of a dive into to bring forth some of the relevant numbers, financial-wise, for our district, both how we're doing and how we compare to some degree as I look through it. So I guess I'm remiss to know whether this is Rich or Carrie or a tag team.
I'll be running through it. Carrie's available to help answer any questions that come up.
Perfect.
And so like everything else, a tag team and a true team effort in putting all of the information together. So as Joe shared, we're sharing some data today that obviously isn't, doesn't encompass everything under that operations and facilities umbrella. It's a very large umbrella. It kind of encompasses all of the non-academic areas across our district. The data that's shared is a combination of some current data, but also some trend data and some comparables. As you saw when we brought our data for the other pillars, we utilized the Badger Conference as some of our comparables, so you'll see some of that information shared. The data is, the slides are provided by Baird, Robert W. Baird and Company Incorporated. You can see on this titled slide, there's a little word about them, their company on the slide. They put together compiled data for districts across the state, which allows us to have access not just to our own current and trend data over the past, a lot of what you'll see will be over the past six years, but also you can choose to compare yourself to other schools in your county, or in your conference, or in your CISA area. And as we're going through this, I'll stop on each page to see if there's any questions on that page from board members, or anything that you want to dig into further. In some cases, there's a piece of data, especially on that first slide, that we'll see where there's trend data and comparable data coming up a little bit later in the presentation. But as Joe shared, at our next board meeting on the 26th of September, is where we'll be looking for the board to inform we approve a goal and some three or four focus areas under the umbrella of operations and facilities. So if there are, if there's anything that we, that you'd like to have more information on, let us know tonight, and we can be sure to bring that on the 26th. So we'll go ahead and jump to that next slide then. And the kind of highlight these as we go, going left to right for the most part. And on this slide, there's a lot of different pieces of information. You can see in that upper left-hand corner has that our school report card score is 67.4. That's our overall district score. If you recall, that's from 2021, because we haven't gotten the 2022 data on that yet. So we should be getting in another month or so this past year's report card score. Right below that is our open enrollment data, and you can see again for 2021, we have 337 people's transferred in from outside our district, 409 people's transferred out. And the net aid transfer of that disparity is almost about $437,000 going out of the district, because we have more resident students opening enrollment out. We have seen a trend of that difference between open enrollments in and out decreasing, which is a good trend for us to have. We also had just some anecdotal in talking to our registration, on student registration information, or a number of students who have been open enrolling into the district, who this year have moved into the district, which is also a plus. It would both reduce the number of, while it will reduce the number of people's transferring in from outside, it will be additional students who have moved into our district. On the bottom left-hand corner of that first page is our percent of students who are economically disadvantaged for this current year. It's 22.8%. A little bit later, there'll be a slide that shows how that compares across the state to the state average. The first tall graph there that's titled enrollment, the FTE, has three different things that are listed. It has headcount, which are the number of students, and this is from 2022. So this was last year's headcount. The equalization aid includes the summer school students at 100%. So the reason that that bar is higher than the headcount is that that has built into it the summer school enrollment. And then the third bar is the revenue limit average, which is a three-year average that's used to determine our revenue limit. And that uses 40% of summer school across the state. They don't give full credit in that computation for 100% of your summer school attendance, but you do get 40% of your summer school attendance. And we will see later on what that trend data looks like in that area. In the next column, we have the in funds 10 and 27. You can see the revenues and expenditures from the 2021 year. We will be seeing later on both what our six-year trend is in revenues and expenditures, and what the, how that compares to other Badger Conference schools. You see in 2021, about $50.2 billion in revenues and about $49.2 million in expenditures. Right underneath that is our fund balance, and again, with our fund balance, we'll be seeing in a later slide what that trend data is and how that compares to other districts. But in 2021, our fund balance was about $19 million, and which was a shade below 19% of our fund 10 expenditures for that year. And then in the far right column is the 2022 revenue limit and equalization aid information. So this is kind of from last year's budget. Our total revenue limit authority was a shade over $38 million, and if you recall, our total expenditures were about $45 million, so, or our total revenues. So our revenue limit brings in about $38 million of $45 million overall revenue. And you can see in the slide, here in the graph, a pie graph below that, a shade under two-thirds of that is equalization aid, which is funding coming from the state, and a shade over one-third is the revenue limit level, which is our local contribution to that. And again, there'll be some more information on that coming up on a later slide. And in the bottom right-hand corner, a couple of different things around the equalization aid. Shade over $2 trillion in equalized value for 2022. That's the total, I guess in a nutshell way to describe that, is our total property value across our entire school district, and that includes residential, egg, and commercial property value.
Billion, billionaire, Rich.
Did I say trillion? Oh, yeah, that's, we're not that. So 2 billion, shade over.
You keep being a math teacher, you won't get it.
Thank you for correcting that.
You try to make me feel better than the last meeting.
You did that. That comes out to be about a shade over $600,000 per member in equalized value. Our school levy for last year was about $19 million, and our no rate for last year was $8.29. You can recall last, at the end of reading at our last board meeting, we talked a little bit about the trend of that no rate and how that compares to some other districts, and probably looking at as an approximation for that coming here. So before we go on to any other slides, any questions or thoughts from the board on any of the data from this slide?
The equalized value per member, what is that? Is there a range that most districts fall in, or do we, do you know of that?
We don't today have comparison data on that. We can check and see if Baird has some comparative data on that. I think there's a pretty wide range on that, and obviously there's two things that go into it. The value or the wealth, if you will, of the district, and the number of students or the membership in the district. So if districts are very small, small membership, but very large property value, that number's going to be quite large, and vice versa. If it's a very large district without comparatively large equalized value, that number's going to be smaller. But that's one thing, Carrie, if you're taking notes on things, we can look for and bring back to the next meeting. Now that's your notes.
You're teeing me up to talk about equalization aid.
If there aren't any other questions on that slide, we'll go to the next slide, and that one is getting into some, some more information that digs in a little bit more deeply into some of the areas we talked about, but also some new information. Down the left side, it has the revenue limit, the max revenue per member. In that first box, it's where it has the $10,006. That's our local revenue limit, is $10,006 per member. And compared to the low revenue ceiling across the state, which is $10,000. So we're just a very small shade above that low revenue ceiling. We're $6 per member above that, or 0.06% above that. And the slide right next to it doesn't compare to the low revenue ceiling, it's the state average for revenue limit is $10,810. So there you can see we're about seven and a half percent below the state average. And that's something that we want to pay attention to, and it really reinforces, there are, there are large differences across the state because of the way the legislature has determined how individual districts are going to be funded. There are large differences between funding, funding per member from one district to another.
And Rich, as I recall, that number was essentially locked in for everybody in the state back in the 90s, right? And there's outside of the legislature going back and reworking the formula. Essentially, we're locked into that forever, absent of a legislative solution in Madison?
Absent of legislative action, yes. Yes.
Or?
Well, we're locked into that system.
Outside of an operating.
Carrie's or is getting at it. The other piece of this system is that it gives local districts the opportunity to address their financial needs through local operating reference.
Okay. Thank you.
Below that, there's a per pupil revenue limit adjustment, and that gives some history across the state. So this one isn't specific to us, but it's what changes have been made in the legislature. And you can see a couple of years, in 18 and 19, there was no increase to the per pupil revenue limit. In 2020 and 2021, there were increases of $175 and $179. In 2022, there was no increase, and it's not showing on this slide, but in 2023, there's also no increase. We've talked about the frozen revenue limit over the last two years of the biennium. So that $354 is the total over this timeframe of the increase. So you can see that although there were some periods where that revenue limit did increase, overall, when you include those years where it wasn't any increase, and you include the added inflationary costs, especially over the last couple of years, and the upcoming year with another $0 increase, it's putting ourselves and a lot of districts in a financial situation where increasing revenue isn't keeping up with increasing costs. In the, in the graph below that, it's specific to categorical aids, per pupil categorical aids. Again, there you can see some increases in 2018, 2019, and 2020. And, but then frozen in 21, 22, and also frozen in 2023. So a total increase over that six-year span of $492 per pupil. And then that, again, that's something that we were hoping that the legislature will look to increase, both the revenue limit adjustment and the per pupil categorical aids in the next biennium would be very beneficial for us. On the top of the right-hand column, the first graph, we have special education categorical aid reimbursement percent. So in the box, it talks about the average special education costs funded via the general fund. So that $4 million is the amount, the average amount per year that for our school district, that we're spending on educational costs beyond what's being reimbursed. And then you can see from 2018 through 2022, what that reimbursement percent has looked like. You can see it when it decreased over the first couple of years that are shown here, but then there's been a couple of years of increase. And there has been a push to continue to increase what portion of the special ed costs are reimbursed to districts, because our district, like all other districts, the portion that's not reimbursed is paid for out of the general fund for districts. Underneath that, it has for our district, what percent of our students fall into some of those different categories in comparison to the state. This is for 2022, 12% of our students have disabilities, and that compares to the state average of 15.6%. 22.8% of our students were economically disadvantaged, which compares to the state average of 36.3%. And 2% of our students were English language learners, and that compares to the state average of 4%. And we do have a slide coming up that shows some of that trend data for our Beaver Dan and for the state. The bottom right-hand corner, the revenue limit FTE. If you recall, on the first slide, there was a bar that showed our revenue limit of 3,000, our revenue limit FTE of 3,466 students. That's our three-year average that's used to determine our funding from the state. And this, this data display can be a little bit confusing, and it's, the percents that are listed there are based off the starting year 2018. So in 2018, that revenue limit FTE was 34.97, and it increased by, to, it increased to 35.17, which was 100.6% of the base year of 2018. So that 100.6% that's listed there is in comparison to in 2018, and as are the percents in all of the other, the other numbers. They're all going back and comparing to that 2018. So you can see that there was an increase in 2019 in our, in our FTE, but then it's been on a decrease in trend since then. Pretty small decreases in 2020 and 21, a little bit larger decrease in 22. And we won't know where that number lands until we do our third dry count coming up here in a couple of weeks and get that data from the state for this current year. Any other questions, thoughts on that page?
Rich, what's the measurement used for the economically disadvantaged?
It's the students that qualify for free reduced price lunch. If no other questions, the next page. We have the year-over-year revenue expenditures, so these are getting into some of the trends that we talked about before. There's four different graphs here. I'll start in the upper left-hand corner. That just has our fund 10 and 27 revenues and expenditures listed over time, going back a period of, of six years. You can see the, one, one thing that shows our, our increasing, the green bar are the revenues, and you can see that increasing over time, but then a decrease in 2020 and an increase in 2021. The revenues that, or the expenditures in the, I'm going to call that purple bar, that kind of mirrored the expenditures, but you can also see that over, from 2016 through 2019, that three of those four years, we had more, higher expenditures than revenues. And there are years where you may need to do that, but it certainly can't be a long-term trend over time to spend more money than you have coming in, in that particular year. 2020, if you recall, was a year where our expenses ended up being lower than planned because some things were canceled with, with school being closed with COVID, and also some of that carried over into the 2021 year. The yellow line there just shows the, either a surplus or a deficit. I think it's important to note that the, on the right-hand side, zero is kind of in the middle of that line, so anything that's below that midpoint was when there was a deficit in the budget, and anything above that line is when there was a surplus in the budget. Right below that is the fund balance by year. Obviously, the fund balance is impacted by that difference between the revenues and expenditures, again, going back to 2016. And there's a couple of different things that are measured here. The bars show the fund 10, fund balance. So going back to 2016, that bar shows a $7.41 million fund balance, and all the way up until 2021 is a $8.96 million fund balance. And you can see the trend there is that there were slight decreases in that fund balance up through 2019, and then some growth in the fund balance, in the dollar amount of the fund balance between 2019 and 2021. There's two lines that are depicted there. The darker purple line is our fund balance as a percent of expenditures. So again, going back to 2016, you can see our fund balance was 19% back in 2016. So that $7.4 million was 19% of our expenditures for that year. As our fund balance decreased over the next few years and our expenditures increased, you can see that that fund balance percentage decreased all the way down to 15.7% in 2019, and then it grew to right around 19% over 2020 and in 2021. The other line that's listed there- The other line that's listed there is the state average for fund balance. So you can see that our fund balance is, is a bit below, kind of consistently below that state fund balance. You can see that even statewide, from two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty-one, statewide, the average fund balance grew, probably for the same reasons that ours did during that same period of time. And you can see that on the right side of that data display, as that, as that count goes from zero percent up to thirty percent, where the state average is a bit above thirty percent in fund balance, where ours is about nineteen percent for two thousand twenty-one. The upper right-hand corner is the educational cost per member, and I want to note that the different things that are highlighted there are the things that are included in that count. An example of something that's not included in that would be referendum debt service. This isn't included in that count. But again, here, there's a few different things that are measured. It shows our overall cost per member. For two thousand twenty-one was about fourteen thousand dollars. Again, that's per, per member, so it's divided by a hundred students. You can see what portion of that is spent in, in education, and then it doesn't have the numbers for the areas that are smaller, but it also includes facilities, transportation, food service, and community service. So you can see that that's grown over time. The blue line there shows the state average educational cost per member. So those are our expenditures, and you can see they're consistently below that state average in our expenditures per member. Kind of think that is, how much are we spending per student? It's not exactly a per student because it's using that membership number, but you can see that compared to the, to the statewide average, we're, we're consistently below that. And then the one below that is the corresponding graph showing over that same time period our revenues per member. The revenues are split into a couple of different parts. The largest portion is the yellow there that comes from the state. The next largest is the lighter green. That's the property tax, our local levy. There's a darker green up on top, that is the local non-tax revenue. And then there's a blue bar there that are federal revenues that come to districts. And you can again see there almost a mirror image of our, our revenue consistently lower than the state average in revenue cost. And we will see are also coming out in both the revenues and expenditures, how that compares to other Badger Conference schools coming up on the other slide.
Rich, on the, the upper left graph, twenty nineteen is when the capital referendum came on, right? If you know, or anyone following along, seeing that approximately five million dollar jump, that's, that is reflection of the capital referendum, not spending on operations. And I guess I'm just making sure it's stated out there.
And I want to make sure I don't miss any parts to that. Kari, do you want to speak to that? I want to make sure you didn't hear Dave's question.
I'm not sure. I heard, yeah, I heard a fan turn on in a, I just wanted to, I guess, clarify for anyone following along, the capital referendum debt service came online in twenty nineteen, so that approximately five million dollar change in revenues was, had a increase in our operational expenses, but a reflection of the bond issue to the capital referendum. Is that, is that right?
So we're in the upper-left box.
Correct.
That's talking about Funds Ten and Twenty-Seven?
Yes.
So that operational debt would not be included in there? That we, we got Fund Thirty-Nine or Fund Forty-Nine?
Capital referendum.
That's not in there? Capital, correct.
Okay.
It's not in there, yeah, the, the bond issue, the fifty-nine point nine, and that's also not in this figure on the debt service payments as well.
Correct.
So you're looking at the forty-seven point three million?
Yes.
Point, forty-four point five million?
Starting at eighteen, forty-two, wouldn't that go into forty-seven?
Forty-seven, okay. We would have to, oh, I see what you're, okay. I would have to dig in to it a little bit deeper. But one of the things to be mindful of when we look at our data is that we have a pretty large lease for our computers. And when the new lease comes online, that gets booked for the full value of machine borrowing. And so sometimes that can cause a spike in our, in our data. But we'll have to dig in and look at the jump. The other thing to think about, though, we lose on the slide. Rich, you have a slide that talks about the change in the revenue limit, and it's one of the things that happened in twenty nineteen, that might be contributing factor as well, is that we got the revenue limit, which also increased our revenue authority. But we can, we can dig in and look at that difference too, like the student.
Yeah, we can look at the, both the timing of those categorical aid changes and the revenue that contributes and the impact it would have had on that part. Now, I think, I think we can, we'll dig in and look at that. It was a increase and then a decrease to follow, and then an increase for the third year of those three. Well, Rich, more info on that in the next slide.
Because I do think between the, yeah, per people aid went up, as well as the revenue limit per member went up, like the very first date. So that's certainly a contributing factor. And I think at the same time, did our membership go up too? So all of those things would drive up some of the revenue before. But I couldn't tell you how to come on.
Sure. And one other, I guess more observation than anything, I think it's good that our, what the percent of expenditures has been going up. I didn't realize until seeing this that we were still significantly behind the state average, even though we talk about our priorities for expenditures and our ability to fund things. It's, it's, so we're, I guess, just to look at our fund balances, to get a percentage relative to the state average, and hopefully over the years, we can close that gap more. But, but again, it's just something as, as we talk about things that we want to need in the future, that's just good to have, I guess, a reminder where we are relative to our peers in state. So that's, that's the, that's.
We do have a slide coming up that also compares other, other fund balances to other Badger Conference schools. Sometimes, while that state comparison is valid, and very valid, it's also good to look at Badger Conference schools our size is how we compare. All right, so we go to the next slide, it's into some of those comparables. We have other, other Badger Conference schools. Again, on this slide, there's four different graphs, I'll start in the upper left-hand corner. This one just lists the revenues and expenditures for each district, and they're sorted by revenues per district. That obviously is gonna have a, a large part of those total revenues and expenditures for each district are based on the size of the district, on how many students there are in the district. So one of the things that we'll see coming up in another slide is when you break that, those revenue and expenditures down, per member is maybe a more valid comparison than just looking at what that total, total revenues and total expenditures are. In the one below that is that comparison that I was just speaking to about the fund balance. And again, there's a lot going on in this slide, so I'm gonna take a minute to, and then talk my way through it. The bars are the, the white bars show the total dollar amount of each school district's fund balance. So you can see Milton is kind of in the middle there, and you can see about nine million dollars is the, the size of our bar. You can see way on the far left, Watertown has the largest fund balance at about twenty-four million dollars. On the far right, Beaver Bank has the smallest at about five million dollars. But also in addition to looking at what that dollar amount is, it's good to compare, what is that dollar amount as a percent of your expenditures? So the red dot, or maroon dot, on each of those, for each of those school districts is what is that fund balance as a percent of their expenditures? So you can see again, for us in the middle, that red dot, and if you go over to the right to see where that falls in the range, is a shade below that twenty percent mark, and it even says above that that ours is nineteen percent of, of our total expenditures. So again, there you can see where different districts compare. But then the other is the, the group average. So that pink line through the middle is the overall average of the group. And that, and that pink line is about at Fort Atkinson's level. Fort Atkinson is, it goes about through the top of Fort Atkinson's bar, and Fort Atkinson's fund balance is thirty-three point one percent of their overall expenditures. So the Badger Conference average is about a thirty-three percent of fund balance, where ours is nineteen percent, and the state average, going back to that previous slide, was about a shade over, somewhere maybe close to the conference average. About, it's not listed there, but I think that about thirty-two or thirty-three percent, thirty-two to thirty-two percent is probably in the, in the ballpark. So again, it kind of ties into what David shared earlier about where our fund balance is compared to other districts as a percent. If you compare the heights of those red dots, you can see a few districts out to the right of us that have red dots that are, that are lower than ours, that have a smaller overall percent. And then you see some districts both to the right and to the left that have a higher percent of their fund balance as a percent of their overall expenditures. And the, the value of having, there's a couple of things that add to the value of having a fund balance. The next agenda item, Kari is gonna share some information about short-term borrowing. So having a healthy fund, fund balance decreases both the likelihood and the need for any type of, of short-term borrowing, and because the, the times that the revenues come in don't always correspond with the times that the expenses aren't incurred. But it also, as, as David shared earlier, having a, a fund balance of, of an amount in that range is fiscally prudent because you have unexpected expenditures that may come up from time to time, or the legislature may put freezes on the, the revenue limit, and, and at that point, we either need to make reductions to our expenditures, which are cuts to our programs and to our people, or bring a operating referendum to our voters to try to balance those revenues and expenditures. And you can, you can put that on for a short time by utilizing your fund balance, but utilizing fund balance to meet deficits in your annual budgets is not a, a long-term strategy, obviously. In the upper right-hand corner and the lower right-hand corner are those educational costs and revenues per member comparisons with the other Badger Conference schools. And you can see on both of those, we are the farthest to the right on a per-member basis. So we have the, the lowest revenue per member compared to all the other Badger Conference schools, and the lowest expenditures, educational expenditures compared to all of the different schools. In the upper right-hand corner, it's split again, the largest is that light blue portion of education, but it also includes facility costs, transportation costs, community service costs. And then that group average, ours is thirteen point eight thousand per member. This is for the twenty twenty nine year, that we have the comparable data. And you can see that group average is about the height of the bare blue bar, it's about fifteen point five thousand per member. So those are expenditures, and then you can see the same thing in our revenues. And the revenues again are broken out by both state, local, and federal sources of revenue, and our fourteen point three thousand dollars in revenue per student is, is below that average for the Badger Conference. Questions, thoughts on those comparables?
Getting back to that fund balance for a second, I think this box in the lower left really shows me a lot, because when you look at these comparable districts, you see that the differences are so great. And I'm sure if we looked at the same thing on a statewide graph, it would be even more pronounced. And so when I see the nineteen percent, I believe, I guess I'd have to check, but I think our auditor said that that's a healthy number, and they were pleased with that?
Correct. Historically, people have talked about twenty percent, three months of expenditures over the historical typical winters, and they have made positive comment on our fund balance.
Thank you.
If there isn't anything else on that, we'll go to the last slide of data. Our some demographic enrollment variables and demographic data trends. So we earlier had looked at our percent of students that are economically disadvantaged, that are English language learners, or that are students with disabilities. Across the top of, of this page, it has three slides that show those trends over time, as well as the statewide comparisons over time. So again, now this is going back about to two thousand sixteen, it's through two thousand twenty-two, and showing that in, actually in all three of those areas, our, our trend and our current is below the, the state average in each of those. Definitely a trend, although the number is low, a growing trend in our English language learners across our district. You can see the upward trend over time there. We're economically disadvantaged, if you go back to two thousand sixteen, it went down, and then it's, and it's gone up since then, but it's kind of had an up and down pattern over the last four years. And our percent of students with disabilities has been in at eleven and a half to just a shade over twelve percent over time throughout that time frame. Our enrollment by grade level is the bottom left-hand corner, we've seen this slide before, and it reinforces, again, this is the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, so that large senior class that graduated out, another large class moving to the senior class this year, that two hundred sixty-six juniors. And you can see last year's kindergarten of, of two hundred twenty-six students. We're anticipating that this year's kindergarten, when we get our third Friday count, is gonna be a little bit below that. So we want to be alert to what those enrollment trends look like. We know that there's always students moving in and students moving out that play a role in what those long-term enrollment projections are. But the biggest part of our enrollment projections are made up by the size of those graduating classes compared to the size of the incoming kindergarten classes. And in the bottom right-hand corner for the district enrollment, that just has our, what, what portion of those are resident students and what are open enrollment students? You can see that our number of, the yellow bar with the open enrollment students, it's kind of a small bar on the bottom there, but if you look at the numbers, you can see that that growing over time, the number of students who are open enrolling, where the resident enrollment has stayed fairly stable with a slight decrease over the last couple of years going up to two thousand twenty-one. So questions, thoughts from board members on that slide or that information? If not, the last thing that we included was just a, kind of a cover page and part of the table of contents of a, because this pillar is operations and facilities, we wanted to alert the board, and there's a link to it, to a hundred sixty-five page document, a hundred sixty-seven page document, there's not an expectation that anyone will, will go through and, and review all of that. But we wanted to share it because this was back in two thousand fifteen. So this was before any of the, the referendum work on our facilities. It was a facility study that, that PRA did in conjunction with our district staff back in two thousand fifteen. But we have a, a new board, obviously, since then, and we want board members to be aware of that facility study. But also now that we have our facility projects finalized, they're decent value, and working with PRA to conduct another facility study so that we can plan for the future and... and make sure that the investment that our taxpayers have made in our facilities, that we're good stewards of, of our facilities and that we're planning what our long-term needs are going to be for our facilities. So that's just something that we may consider as either a goal or a focus area in their operations and facilities would be working with our partners to, to go down that path again. And you can see in the, in the table of contents portion of that, it looked at all of our existing facilities. It has some survey results and a study of our, our educational spaces that are all included there.
So this is only included as a reference as to if we do move forward, this is what we could expect in another report similar to this?
Yes.
What was the expense on that report, Kerry? Do we know?
Uh, we might have to dig into the, the, but that predates both Kerry and I. Stephen, I don't know if you remember back what?
I have a ballpark in my head, but I never like to shoot numbers out unless I have my finger on that.
It's a pretty extensive report.
We can put more info on that.
Yeah, I could, I can share my background. Obviously, I was on the committee that digested that. And I did read all hundred and sixty-seven pages. We took turns going through it in incredible detail over about eighteen months. And I would, I would sort of echo the sentiment that, you know, we were, we were blessed by the voters supporting us to do a fifty-nine point nine million dollar address of the issues identified in that report. But that was by no means comprehensive of what our potential needs were. I mean, our committee looked at shooting from the hip, a hundred and fifty million dollars that potentially could be needed. And then you got to debate at what timeframe is. So as we sorted through that and tried to identify priorities versus what we thought could get supportive, et cetera, I think there'd be great value in updating that report. Obviously, we've addressed lots of the deficiencies that that identified, but there were lots of potential deficiencies that we weren't able to address. So it's an ongoing process.
Yeah, and, and I, I think that's really a good approach. It's not too, not to say that we need to go to the taxpayers and ask for more of the facility money because we don't. And that's not, that's not our thinking at all. It's really how can we long-term plan? And we have our five-year capital maintenance plan over, over the next five years. What are the big projects? But it's going out even beyond that. What are our long-term enrollment trends? What are our long-term facility needs so that we're, we're good fiscal stewards for the school district? So we didn't include like our five-year technology plan that board has looked at in the past. We didn't include this in today's update, but, but we can, folks can refer back to that. We didn't include the capital maintenance plan because that's already in for our docs. And we, we've spent some time looking at it. But those are also items that fall under that operations and, and facilities umbrella or pillar, if you will. Based on all of that information, are there any, any other comments, thoughts, questions? I know we took some notes on things that we'll be bringing back next time. But anything else that, that board members would like to talk through or questions that folks have on that topic? If not, thank you all. And thanks to Kerry for her work in, in putting this presentation together and to others across the district who have been involved in, in putting this information together. And that's, we can go ahead to the next agenda.
All right, yeah. And I would echo the thanks from the board. I would have to say that since I've been on the board, this is probably the most comprehensive look at that data, both historical and trend-wise and comparables, to just give us a good picture of where we are and maybe help us figure out where we want to get to, I would say. Okay, moving on, uh, being on new business. And I'm going to presume that Kerry is going to take care of this part. As you'll see, it is linked somewhat to a piece of our discussion that we just had. This agenda topic is discussion and possible action on a resolution that would authorize temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars. And that would be accomplished with issuance of tax and revenue anticipation promissory notes, which would entail participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program, which is a mouthful, but I'm sure Kerry will distill it to a point you can understand.
And then just to add in the memo, the tax and anticipation note that we will get through PMA as part of a group of school districts for four hundred thousand is one portion of our cash flow borrowing. The other portion we'll be bringing to a future meeting is a line of credit that we will secure through one of our local banks. Before we get into too much detail on there, what I wanted to do was just put together a half a dozen slides to talk about why we have cash flow needs and why we do operational borrowing. I don't think I've done this for a couple of years. So I thought there's value in talking about why we borrow money. And one of the big reasons that we borrow money is, as Mr. Donovan had said, the rate at which the money comes in and the rate at which the cash flows out are not aligned. So if you go to the next slide, Kelly. One of the reasons is that our major sources of revenue are from state aid and the local property tax levy. And both of those have their own pattern that they follow. Our expenditures are from accounts payable, which we call the voucher checks, which you approve on a weekly basis or every meeting. And then also we will have payroll. So the payroll cycle is going to be tied to the number of payrolls that, that we have. There will be obviously higher during the school year than over the summer in that pattern. Is one of the things that we see in the payroll checks. Yeah, but as I said, the revenue doesn't come in at the same frequency and amount as the expenditures do. And so what my office does is we work on estimates for what the spending looks like in the, the next year, if you will, or the current year. So we're looking at twenty-two, twenty-three spending. And those estimates are based on the preliminary budget that you adopted in June. So if you go to the next slide, it just kind of shows you the pattern of when equalization aid comes in, which is the gray bars, and when the tax levy comes in. So you can see that state aid, the biggest month we did is June. And then for the tax levy, right now, our pattern is January is the largest, followed by August, and, and then February. And so one of the things when we're doing cash flow borrowing is we kind of look at the pattern. It is a pattern staying the same. And a lot of people choosing to pay their tax bill on July thirty-first instead of December thirty-first, if you will. And then if you go to the next slide, now you can see the voucher checks are in blue and the payroll checks are in orange. And the, the vouchers do have a significant swing typically in July. And then there's different ups and downs as we go through the year. And the next slide takes the revenue pattern and the expenditure pattern and takes our cash balance and then casts that projection forward that shows that in November, we are going to need to borrow money to be able to meet those obligations. And that's actually the next slide, too. I kind of jumped. Arrow, oh, my arrow isn't pointed right. Carly, who's doing my arrow? My arrow is pointed in. Sorry. Okay. But anyway, what's doing, highlighting November is the, the long where we fall short. And then that, the question really is kind of how long is that if you're going to be? And since I have been here, the, the number of days has been shrinking in that window, which makes the line of credit especially appealing because the least amount of time we have those funds, the least amount of interest we pay on them. So, but we are still leaving money to meet our expenses in, in the monthly November. And then what this one doesn't show you because it's doing it on a monthly basis is we actually do a week by week. And so within there, there's times of a week by week where we also will, the, the cash balance is lower. That's the best way of saying it. So if you go then to, I think they gave you the, this is a new board packet, was the, the slide that's, that has a little bit more detail on it and shows when that deficit occurs and when we've been occurring. Yeah, the last slide, then just kind of things to remind people is that cash flow borrowing or our cash flow needs are done on an annual basis. And we continue to look at our patterns and especially watching those patterns with the state aid and, and the tax dollars coming in, as well as the payroll voucher checks. We borrow money for the most periods where we have a cash shortfall. We need to borrow so we have sufficient funds to operate. And as I said, it's based on estimates. And the other thing to just keep in mind is that we have obligation to pay our vendors our stack, which is kind of obvious, but sometimes it's key important to just make it obvious. And then as I mentioned, we have several funding options. And one is the note that we're talking about, and that's a tax in anticipation of receiving tax money. And those can be for a one year or less. And then we have the line of credit that we will establish. And then we will be able to use those monies until June thirtieth. So do you have any questions from the presentation? Okay, so then in the memo, as I have referenced, we're looking at borrowing the two point three overall, which is the number that is calculated with our state harbor, which is in the, the, it's like a document that was attached. And so to, to move forward, the board needs at this point in time to authorize a resolution not to exceed the four hundred thousand for getting the tax and revenue anticipation note through the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program. And what that is, if I can kind of, you know, put a little more about it, is there are multiple districts that group together. And the total, last year, I think the total borrow was over thirty-five million. So PMA, our financial advisors, and they put this plan together to get districts a better rate. And then they have Corals of Brady, I think is the bond council. And you've seen Corals before, their work. And we'll do that when we do the line of credit with the banks. And then they actually have Robert DePierre being a broker on the sale of the house. But we're going to get the benefit of jumping in with, with much larger borrowing on our smaller borrowing, which should have good results in the long run.
Kerry, just to be clear, if we move and approve this, it would be participating in the pool borrowing for now. We would have to subsequent action to do the short-term line of credit?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So we would, you've given us an idea of what the total might be, but we're going to do it in two pieces?
Correct.
Okay.
So tonight is the, is the note. And then we'll go through a similar process with bond council, which will have the, the cash flow that I reviewed with T action. And then we will communicate with the local banks. They will give us proposals and then open proposals to the board for a decision.
Correct. Okay, just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
I think a motion to approve the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars, issuance of tax and revenue anticipation promissory notes and participation of the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program.
I'll second.
Okay, as you've heard, motion from Rick seconded by Jennifer to authorize borrowing in an amount not to exceed four hundred thousand, as Rick just delineated there. Are there any questions on that? I see none. We will roll call vote that. I will start from my left, Jennifer. And Joe is yes. Rick, yes. Mike, yes. John, yes. And Dave, yes. And Q six oh, that clearly passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kerry. That will exhaust that subject. We will move down to C on new business, which is action on open enrollment alternative applications, summary of which is included. I'll move to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three open enrollment alternative applications as presented. I'll second that. Thank you. Motion from John, seconded by Dave to approve our open enrollment alternative applications. Are there any questions on that? All in favor of approval signify with aye. Aye. And opposed, that clearly passes. miscellaneous A is our staffing report that you have in board docs. I'll move to approve the staffing report as presented.
Second.
Motion from Dave, seconded by Rick to approve the staffing report. Questions on it? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that clearly passes. Also, gifts and donations. I'll move to approve the gifts and donations with gratitude. I'll second that. Battle to get into minutes. Motion from John, seconded by Dave to approve our gifts and donations with the gratitude of the district. Questions? All in favor of approval signify with aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that also clearly passes. Which brings us down to meeting dates. Mr. Donovan, what do you got for us?
Regular meetings, the next day is two weeks from tonight on September twenty-sixth here at the usual board meeting time. We do have a couple of policy, or a couple of committee meetings between now and then, which are a full hour of schedule. On Wednesday of this week, Wednesday is September fourteenth, we have HR committee at two o'clock. And then we have a policy committee at three o'clock. Both of those are scheduled for the second floor conference room. And that's on Wednesday, the fourteenth, two days from today. Policy committee or HR committee at two, policy committee at three. Policy committee is scheduled until four thirty. But we go as long as we need to to get our policies covered. And then we had talked about, in, in discussion with Kerry about, I'll make sure I get the date right here. In discussion about preparing for the October twenty-fourth board meeting, there's a really short turnaround time around getting our financial information and then bringing that to the board for approval on the twenty-fourth. So really, the, there's a kind of a really short window for a possible finance committee meeting if the finance committee is interested in getting a look at that information before it comes to a full board. It would almost have to be on Thursday, the twentieth, that you could bring the information because we don't get it until, or Kerry doesn't get it until shortly before that. She has a short turnaround time to get it ready for that board meeting on the twenty-fourth. So we could pretend to have a finance committee meeting on Thursday, the twentieth, if that worked for the finance committee. Or we would just maybe bring that info straight to the board without the finance committee meeting to have their eyes on it ahead of time. Kerry, did I describe that pretty well?
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I can make that work if it's okay with the rest of the committee. You have interest in looking at it ahead of time? I guess I find a little value in that, so.
Back at that, the twentieth?
Yeah.
Is there a time on the twentieth that would work?
Does that midday window work?
Yeah, it seems like it typically then. Another window that works for all of you.
That works for the three of you to get that.
Is that amenable to the two of you that have to noon on the twentieth?
Noon on the twentieth, you got that in your notes.
I'll let Spencer and Kerry kind of get that.
Let's set that up. Please remind us as we, we've got a couple of meetings between now and then, so please remind us.
No, we wanted to give a heads up in case, to, to find out if that day would work or not.
Okay.
That's what we have for our upcoming meetings.
Very good. All right, we also are scheduled to go into an executive session that will not be terribly long. So, and we are not planning to come back to open for any action of any kind. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five sub one, which is considering a fund on promotion compensation of performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body is jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Topic here would be a tech department restructuring.
Go move.
Second. Thank you. Motion from Rick, seconded by Dave. Roll call that. Dave, yes. John, yes. Mike, yes. Rick, yes. Joe is yes. And Jennifer, we are in executive session. Thank you all for coming, and we will see you shortly. Thank you all for coming, and we will see you shortly.